Welcome to the Pocahontas School Board Work Session. Today is Monday, October 6th. Meeting is now in session. Dr. Art Buckel.
Okay, we had one item that was requested to be added to the agenda. And so I'm gonna ask that we, that the board would, that you would ask for a vote from the board to add a financial report to the work session agenda. And then we can go, if that passes, we can go through all this.
Okay.
Well, I guess we can't do that on work session. Because that's a board meeting. Never mind. We'll just do it. We're just gonna add it unless anybody has any issues with it.
Okay.
No issue.
Okay. Alright, so I've had some, quite a few questions today on funds and where we're at. Are we making money? Are we not making money? And so I put together a couple of items for you. I want to start by looking at the bar graph. Okay? This is second. Did I not give you one? I'm gonna need that one back. So I want to start by looking at the bar graph. That's yours too, it's gonna be. Okay, so on the bar graph, what you have is you have FY '22 by fund, FY '23, '24, and[96.02][96.02]'25 by funds. Specifically, we're gonna look at the operating fund and the building fund. Because those are the two funds primarily that the district utilizes. You know, as we've said before, the operating fund is really sort of, we can think about it like our checkbook. The building fund becomes our fund that we play, put money in there for building projects. We have used, just to give you a quick rundown, you know, we have used that building fund to help with the foundation repair that we've done. We use that building fund to make, remodel to the bathrooms. We have used that fund to house money. We'll see that for the, when the previous board did the second lien bonds. That's where you put that money to hold on to it. And then when we, when the board relinquished those bonds, you pay that money back out of that. So we'll kind of go through this so that you can see. What you have here, if we're looking at the top one, is FY '22. So this is fiscal year '22. The top there is the building fund. The bottom two are the operating funds. You can see in FY '22 that the district took in revenue. This is our tax dollars, local tax dollars. This is our state foundation money. And this is going to also include some, you know, other revenue that's coming in there. So in essence, the district took in $31.4 million. Okay? For, $31,414,345 to be exact. Our expenses in that operating fund were $31,477,073. So you can see there that we actually spent more expenses than we brought in revenue on that one. Okay? So again, doesn't mean anything from a, it's not, I mean, of the health of the district. It just kind of brings together how much is revenue is the, is the district getting versus the expenses. If you look at the building fund there, you'll see that the revenue into the building fund was the $8,223,000. The expenses that year were just under $3 million. Now, where is that $8 million coming from? That or those second lien bonds, right? When the district had those second lien bonds, that money was placed in that building fund. You'll, you'll see, you know, not all of that is that, but you'll see where that money's gonna come back out in a later fiscal year.
Okay.
Okay? If we go to FY '23, the next fiscal year, you'll see that revenue into the district was about $33,360,000. Expenses there, $32,114,000. Now, this, when you, when you look at this, this is also, just to clarify, I believe, this has also got transfers in it, right? So some of it, it's a little larger because of the way the accounting process works. So it looks a little bit larger than like our, our actual budget of $23 million, for instance, this year. Okay? So that's where you're seeing some of that. Again, the building, you're looking at an expense of $4.5 million. Again, that's where that second lien bond money was coming out of. That's why that expense is so large with the revenue of about 1.5 going in there. So you can clearly see, year over year, if we keep going to FY '24, the expenses that year, $36,784,000 compared to $35,143,000. So again, they actually had more expenses than we brought in, than the revenue. And then you can see there the, the building fund, revenue of about 4.7. Now where does that come from? You'll, I'll remind the board that we reset the clock financially. If you'll remember, our board meeting, that was in the library that night. I talked about the way that the district was spending money historically, going back to previous superintendents, up through the, me. And at that time, in previous years, the district was spending all of our state money and, and then utilizing our local money for building projects and things like that. That was, that was prior to 2020. Okay? Then if you'll remember our conversation that night, I talked about that since, from 2020 to 2023, they had gotten into a habit of spending all the local money first and not spending all the state money. The reason that was an issue is because when the state looks at our books, which they do every month, every year, when the state looks at our books, what they see is Pocahontas isn't spending all the money we send them. Why should we send them so much? Right? And we want to make sure that we're sending the signal to Little Rock that we are spending, we are using our money wisely, we are spending the state dollars, that they are sending us and spending them in the way that we need to be spending. Okay? So that was why we, we hit that reset button. It was, it was very strategic. It was on, you know, very purposeful because we want to make sure that as a community, as a school district, we are sending the message to our legislators and to the state Capitol that we are utilizing the money that they're sending us. So that's where that comes from. And then when you look at last year, FY '25, you'll see, again, revenue at about $35.135 million. Expenses slightly under that, $34,000, or $34,245,000. Again, revenue into the, the building fund was a little higher than expenses, but we did have expenses out of that building fund. We remodeled the bathrooms. That's what that building fund is there for. We need, you know, the district has done a very good job. The board has historically done a very good job of making sure that there is more revenue going into the building fund than expenses coming out. That's important because that is one of the levers that Desi looks at. The financial department, so the Department of Education, the financial division, that is one of the things they look at to make determinations on whether or not a district is financially healthy. Are they putting more money into the building fund? Are they growing that building fund? Or do they spend more than they bring in every year and they have to dip out of the building fund to pay the bills, right? That's what the state is trying to look at. So the district historically has been, has operated the way, in my opinion, the way we should be. We've, we've been making sure that we are utilizing our resources, our financial resources appropriately. And you can see from these numbers that we are not, you know, making money every year. We're actually there, in the last four years, there's a couple of years where we're actually spending a little bit more than we're bringing in. That's not a bad thing, as long as we don't do that every single year. Okay? So that's-
Well, I'm glad, I mean, you know, one of the things that thirty years, the board has always done is when we built the cafeteria at, indeed, which, you know, we used to build it. We built the athletic building, built the junior high gym, building, and all of those things. That kept the district going asking for a millage increase. So that's why that, you're right, that's why that building, that is so important, to keep it alive.
And it's one of the reasons that we're having to ask for a smaller millage.
Exactly.
What are some of the things that you would say would be the, so the years that we spent just barely over the revenue? I understand, but what are some of the reasons for the years we spent maybe under and then this one significantly over? Like what would the expenses be that would fall?
So I would say, given a little bit more time, I could, I could get you a detailed-
Just a kind of an idea of what they would-
Right. That is something we can do. As I've kind of was working through today, I was trying to find a, a simple way to present the information.
Yeah. No, this is, this is good. I just, would it be, would it be like in maybe extra employees? Or would it be expenses like insurance expenses? That's kind of what I'm wondering.
Right. It, I mean, that is something that-
I don't have to know exactly.
We can, we can dig into and kind of see where that's coming from.
Because some of them are significant. Like expenses, expense was more.
Right, like-
But then, but then the next year, it's the opposite.
It does have been, you know, public money involved in it.
It could have been Esther dollars, yes, sir?
Yeah.
Or we had to spend it.
Yeah. Out of the operating, probably, I mean, if it, if we were looking at the six, the federal fund, I would say yes, definitely. Out of the operating, I think there's probably a different answer for that.
Yeah.
We just have to dig into it a little further, which I, I can certainly do. I did, okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna show you a couple of other things that I looked at because, you know, yes, this is important, but I also think it's, it's wise to take a look at where do we fall? How do we compare to similar districts? And so one of the things I did was I pulled information on the 25 districts that are around our, our enrollment. So if, and at the top, it tells you. So like on the first one you see there, this is a, a sort of districts by millage rate. So what you see, and what you see here is you see that when you compare the millage rates, which is right in the middle, that column right in the middle, of like districts. These are districts that are from about 1,500 kiddos to about 2,475. Okay? So we're not talking about, we're not comparing Pocahontas to Bentonville. We're not comparing Pocahontas to, you know, Maynard. We are comparing ourselves to school districts of similar size, like Westside's in here. You see Gentry is in here, Archadelphia, and they're from all over the state. So there are 25 districts in here. When we look at our current millage rate, which is 32.81, you can see that for districts our size across the state, we are number four from the bottom. Okay? I think that's, that is important to, to kind of have an eye on of what does that look like, especially as we are having this conversation and asking the community to take a hard look at our millage rate and what that looks like. Okay?
And my greatest rival is Batesville-Southside, which is in our district.
Our conference.
Forty-five mills.
That is correct.
And we're 32.
That is also correct.
Our kids compete against their kids and wow, I didn't realize that.
Even Westside's-
Westside's up there. So it gives you, that gives you an idea on the mill, on the mills. So if you go to the next page, this is just, I thought it was just interesting information. This is by district by collection rate. So this one, the lowest collection rate is at the top. So we're right, we're right in the middle. So it's not like we're, we're collecting more or really less tax as far as the number of people who are paying their taxes. It's right there. We are, I've got there at the bottom, the average. So you can see Pocahontas is about 96.48%. The average is 96.34%. So it's right in there as average for this collection of, of school districts. Now, here's what I, this one I thought was important. So the, the third one, it says by district by fund three balance. So this is these same districts looking at their building fund. Okay? So what you'll notice there is we are close to the top there, but that is because we have had a plan. We have, there has been, going back to 2020, right, a, a need and a plan to look at a major building project, that being the high school. And knowing that the board was going to, or assuming, I guess I should say, the board was going to want to make that ask as small as possible for the community, that fund three balance had to be built up. And so you'll see there that that's a 17.8, right, at the close of, of '25. This is the close of fiscal year '25. So going back to July this summer, 17.8 million in there. Okay? Now, let's look at, once we utilize the 12 million that the board has committed to that project, where do we fall? And we fall more to the middle at that point, right? The question becomes, is there a required amount of dollars the, the district is required to have in the building fund? And the answer is no. The answer is the, the district, the board can choose to have as much money in that building fund as, as a board is comfortable with. Okay? And so that's where we had the conversation in previous meetings about, did we want to keep five in there? Did we want to keep three in there, right, as, as far as the board? Did they want, did the board want less than that or more than that? And that's sort of how we landed on five. Just a reminder that there are things that are increasing, like our insurance, right? If, if something were to happen, our deductible has gone up. It will continue to go up. And this is the, I mean, this is one of those pots of money, fund three, where something like that, it would be appropriate for that money to come out of. But you have to have the money there to take care of those emergencies that happen.
That was one of the reasons I kind of felt comfortable with five, because we're going into this building project, we're asking for as little millage as we can. And as opposed to trying to go back to ask the taxpayers, you know, we may end up having to use two of it to finish, you know, how over just go.
Right.
And, you know, ideally, I like five, but, you know, we could probably get by with this a little less story.
And so you start seeing-
I understand how Maynard, when they did their projects, you know, I mean, they did a good job. They had to go back to the patrons for more money. We don't want to do that.
Correct, yes. I agree.
I agree with Brett, having a little bit of cushion there, because we have other projects on the list. We've got other things that we're wanting to do, smaller, of course, but having that reassurance that-
And some of these schools-
The community's gonna get this building.
Some of these schools surrounding us have projects going on, like when?
Mm-hmm.
They have projects, Westside has projects, so their building fund is up there too.
Right. And those, those-
I don't know about Southside, but-
Those building funds are, well, yeah, they have a, they have-
Are they building something?
They were. I don't know if they've completed it or not. They're still building it, so they're still in the process.
So their funds are big, they've got a big account.
Right? The reason you have those funds is for these kinds of projects. So that gives you an idea of what that looks like. I did give you a, a fund two ending balance. Again, this is, keeping in mind that this would have been in July, June, July this, this year. And are, the, the answer to the question of, is there a minimum amount of money that can be in your fund two? The answer is, there's not a minimum, but there is a maximum. So you, you can't carry over any more than 20% of your legal balance. And your, the state tells us every year what our legal balance is. For the last couple of years, that legal balance has been the same number, roughly. It's been about little under $4 million. Okay? Prior to that, in 2022, that, that, is 2022? No. 23, that number was a little higher, was closer to like 4.3 million. Okay? Now, what is that money used for? That money is used to pay our bills in June, July, and August, because the last payment that we get from the state every year is in May. Okay? So what that means is, we have to make sure that we hold on to enough money to make payroll, for example, in those months when we are not getting dollars, because we don't get dollars again until September. Right? So just like in our, you know, in our personal lives, we have, you have to have money set, set back aside to pay the bills when you don't get paid. Right? And so that's kind of what that's, why that's important. There are, now that, that goes back to philosophies of boards, philosophies of superintendents on how much money you hold in that account.
What you're saying is the end of June, which fiscal year starts July 1st, that balance is gonna be larger because you still got to make payroll for July.
Correct.
And, and other bills.
Yes.
You gotta pay the electric bill.
Correct.
Okay. I wasn't aware of that.
Yes.
So it looks bigger than it really is.
Yes. Yeah, it looks bigger there because, you know, yes, we have to pay those bills and, and we can't say to, you know, the electric company or the gas company or our teachers, hey, we can't pay you again until September. Right? And then we have to have that money there.
What is the roughly our payroll per month? Don't have to be inside.
Uh, it's about, I want to say it's around $900,000.
Gosh.
Whoa.
So-
Per month?
Right there, we're showing, if we're showing excess, $2 million, it's real easy to go in two months.
Yeah.
It's already here, man.
Yeah.
Okay. I was not aware of that.
Wow. Didn't know, is that a-
Makes sense.
Okay, the next one is just by enrollment, so it gives you an idea of, and I kind of shared that with you, of what that enrollment looks like. It's basically, it's about nine or 10 districts bigger than us, and it's 10 or 11 districts smaller than us, to give you an idea of where everything sits. I think the last one is, is really interesting. This is by assessed values, total assessment. So you can see that Pocahontas is in, we're in the, the bottom half, maybe the, the top of the bottom third of that assess, uh, total assessment. So when you look at that, you know, our assessment is sitting around $203 million. The top assessment in our ADM window sits there with Gravit at $439 million, Southside being $88 million. So it kind of, if we take this into, like, take it all together, one of the reasons that Southside has 45 mills is because their mill, one mill only brings in about $88,000, right? Where for Pocahontas, one mill brings in $203,000. Now, on the flip side, you know, a mill in, let's just go to the top, a mill in Gravit brings in $439,000. So they're, you know, they're bringing in twice what we're bringing in with one mill. So it kind of gives you an idea. So this is why it's hard to say, you know, it's good to, to have that comparison data, but it's also hard because what, what Pocahontas looks like is not necessarily, even among our peers, if these being our, our peer districts, even among our peers, it can be quite different.
Well, that's, well, you take example for Southside, since they busted off from Batesville, they have such a small population, such a small area, they're sitting at 45 mills and they only generate 88 million.
Well, they're, they generate, so, so what you do is you'll take 88,227 multiplied by 45, and that's what they're bringing in.
Right. But that's probably because of the, like you said, the population, there's probably not a lot of homes, there's not a lot of, it's more industry than anything out there.
But I mean, they're over, they're almost, it's every bit of 12 mills higher than we are.
Mm-hmm. And you can see, I mean, when you start looking at that, you know, that the average mills for the set of school, for this set of schools, is a little above 38. And so we're, we're well under that and will remain well under that even with a new millage.
Right. Even comparing your numbers on Southside, your ADM, I mean, they're within 100 kids of us. So they have the district, so even, even the assessments, I mean, the assessment's being lower.
How many different districts is it that pulls out of Randolph County? Sloan?
Mammoth, Maynard.
Mammoth.
Maynard.
Corning.
Maynard.
Does Water Ridge pull any from, or Green County Tech?
Water Ridge, I know, pulls, pulls some.
Tech might, when you get close to your cell plan.
I think, you know, everybody thinks all the dollars that are in Randolph County come to the schools.
Right.
It's based on the school district. That was another thing that we seen in the raw of the day. And it's like, no, it's not every dollar in Randolph County.
Well, and I think, I, I'm gonna go back to, to something that was asked. You know, it's important to understand that the state system, when the assessed value goes up, the state system had, is, had, calls, creates an advantage for the state.
Yes.
I'm trying to figure out how to best say that, right? Because what happens is, when the assessment goes up, the state says, oh, your assessment has gone up, so your local share of the total dollar goes up while the state share goes down. So the money the school district sees doesn't change.
Right.
The only time that the amount of money the school district sees changes is when either A, the state increases the, the per pupil expenditure, or B, the community raises the, the millage rate. That's it. There is no additional, I mean, there's-
That goes back to the Lightfoot View, really?
Right.
Back in the 60s?
Now, that is, I mean, that's true for the first 25 mills, right? That, you have to sort of separate that out. The debt service mills, it would be true on, but in essence, for every dollar, the assessment goes up, the school district, Pocahontas school district gets 23 cents. For every dollar the assessment goes up, Pocahontas school district gets 23 cents. The rest of it goes to the state and they use it to offset their cost.
Which is why they have an abundance of money left.
We're gonna-
Just saying.
That may never help.
But that per pupil, that per pupil price, the money that they give per pupil is, it's not guaranteed every year, it fluctuates. So it can go down.
It can go down. In fact, next year, it will go down.
It will go down. Right.
Now, the, the offset of that, again, just being transparent, the offset of that is, we, the district, will no longer be responsible for paying our portion of health insurance for teachers.
Right.
Okay.
Right? That was the, that's what the state says, is we're gonna give you less money, but you won't have to pay the, right now, it's, I think, $234.50. It goes up in January to $350. They're not gonna make school districts pay for that anymore. They're gonna keep that money and pay it directly to EBD.
Okay. So it should balance out?
It will, yeah, it will offset a little bit.
A little? Okay.
Yeah. If my, if my, when I calculated that, if my numbers are correct, it, it'll, it should get- it, it'll, it should give us an additional two hundred thousand dollars a year of, of money that we no longer have to send to health insurance.
That's if they don't bring that down the next time they-
Right, yes. We don't know what it'll be, that's a, that's a good point. Right, we don't know what it's gonna be yet. And I will say that there is a group of legislators working to re-model, let's call it, the funding formula, the funding mechanism. So I, I don't, I don't know what that looks like yet. Any questions about that?
They're good, well, explain.
Okay. Would you feel comfortable with that information? Okay. All right, um, moving on to the, uh, first informational item on here. Uh, it was the ASBA Regional Meeting. I just wanted to, um, this is really just informational, bring that to your attention. Uh, the Region Three meeting is in Hillcrest. It will be October thirtieth. That is something that we need to register for if that's something you want to do. Um, they will serve dinner. It is the night, I believe, of our last junior high, was it, football game? So just put that out there as well. And then, just a side note, the ASBA Annual Conference is December tenth through the twelfth. If that's something you would like to, to do, you'd like to be a part of, please let me know, especially if you wanna stay overnight, because we're gonna have to get rooms, and those are gonna go, um, you know, fairly quickly. Two point two, item two point two, you have, uh, this is something that, um, ASBA sent to superintendents and asked us to, um, bring it to the attention of boards. So, um, each year, uh, the board has an opportunity to, um, uh, assign or, or name a voting rep to the, uh, annual conference. So at the annual conference every year, the, uh, voting reps from the two hundred and, I believe it's thirty-seven to thirty-four school districts gather together and they review the resolutions for the coming year. So you have a copy in your, um, board packet of the beliefs and resolutions that would be voted on at that meeting. Just kind of, we'll just kind of look through it and maybe, maybe hit some, uh, hit some highlights. These are things, again, that have been put in to the, um, handbook or are proposed to be put in the ASBA handbook. So you can see down through there that, uh, one is really just declarations of appreciation, uh, where the, the ASBA Board would be providing some thank yous, if you will, or we appreciate. Uh, if you go to Section Two, it kind of talks about the, the beliefs that ASBA assigns to these areas. So in local governance, these are what they're, they're proposing to be the, the beliefs of the School Board Association, which represents you as school board members. Um, goals of education, you can kind of look down through there. Again, this won't be the, the, uh, necessarily the, the last time that you have to look at this, but this would be something that if the board chooses at, uh, maybe our October board meeting to name a voting rep, these are the things that as the voting rep, you would be asked to vote on.
Is that not usually the superintendent?
Uh, no, it's usually a board member at this one. Right. I, I couldn't find where that was, so, um, that would, again, that's, that's something that would be a, a pleasure of the board kind of thing. Okay, last thing, unless there's any questions on the beliefs and resolutions. Okay, the last thing we wanted to talk about, a little bit about, was, um, the branding kit. And so this is something that Abby has worked pretty tirelessly on. She's really, um, kind of taken to heart, something I asked her to work on, which is, you know, I've talked before about the need, and I've talked with administrators about the need, the desire to be a school system and not a system of schools, um, two very different things. And so, um, wanting to bring unity to the district, have one, um, you know, one message that we are sending. We haven't really, we aren't asking or aren't saying we wanna change anything. We are not changing anything. Um, you know, the colors are still what they're red, white, and black. Um, we're still using the, the same logos that the district has had for a number of years. We're just trying to, um, bring those together. Part of that, I just, as I'm, I'm transparent with you, one of the things I noticed, uh, as I've walked campus the last couple of years is, there is a large number of different mascot pictures being used. Um, I think I counted there are six different mascot heads in the gym alone, okay? Um, and, and-
It's collection. It's vintage.
It is vintage. Um, and when you, when you add the, the, um, logos that are throughout the district, you quickly see that that number grows. And so one of the things I, I think, if we're gonna be a, a school, you know, again, school system, not a system of schools, bring unity to that, we need to have a standard, um, Pocahontas redskin logo that we use. And in this case, uh, we've got, in essence, four, because each one of these has a special place with, uh, a particular, um, faculty or a particular building. And I think you can see, you know, knowing the history of, of the community, I think you can kind of see and pick out what, where those, where those are, maybe where those are coming from. So this is something that I wanted to bring to the board. I know there's some, uh, things that maybe the board would like to talk about around, um, how these, how the colors might be used or how the logos might be used, what that looks like, suggestions that, that you have, um, that we can integrate.
I would like the board to discuss or just entertain the idea of bringing back, I don't care, you're gonna, you're gonna- Bringing back the idea of allowing some black uniforms.
Black what?
Black uniforms. I know you're so against that, but I will say, Gary, there are multiple schools that use more than just two colors. You got Highland, they got navy blue, they got gray, and they have red. They have multiple colors. And, and black is just so, like, sleek. And I know it's not a big deal, but it is a big deal. I know that, like, some of these kids are wanting uniforms and we gotta, we're, we're doing it for the kids, okay? His face. I just wanna entertain the idea. I wanna think about it, like, how we- I think it's a good idea, because as a parent, white's horrible, and I think it gives us more options. Anybody have any opinions on her? Oh.
I agree.
See?
My child was a teacher, and she would love to have a black uniform.
White's awful. It's hard to keep clean.
Y'all bagging up on that?
No, it's just, white, after so many years, looks so dingy, after it's been washed, it means it has to look so dingy. I just think, I just think if we're gonna throw black in here, then we need to, we need to allow each, the, each sport to pick black if they would like that.
Probably get more use out of the black uniform for you.
If it has red and white on it, you're still- You're still getting our colors. White is very classy, but white is very dirty.
I was over at Batesville Southside, couple, about three years ago, friend, we were there talking. And the kids, the girls came out, the cheerleaders came by and they had their all white. And his child just dropped, he said, I've never seen a classy in a bunch in all my life.
And I think it's-
Of course, I've heard that. See, my daughter's a coach, she keeps them lined up. They did, they, and going back to Coach Williams days, you know, when they were all, remember, red one down, red and white one, they done it one time.
Right. But I will say, tennis, tennis wears black bottoms, volleyball wears black bottoms. You, you, this would allow basketball to wear black bottoms or football to wear black bottoms, if they wanted to, or black on top, black on bottom. I don't, I'm just saying, at least, we need the option to offer something as a third color. Speaking from experience on the white. It's rough. It's rough, rough. And I'm not saying that cheer or anything like that would change from white. I just feel like that it's been requested before, and I think we just kind of gotta allow some change.
You think, I mean, I think each, each coach of, whether it be cheer, volleyball, or, you know, I'm, I'm not objective if there's something that, you know, that they think is more sleek to wear, you know? It's not like every sport, it's not like, hey, everybody were wearing black uniforms, you know, or-
Yeah.
I mean, I don't-
I just think it allows each sport to choose, and it's not just set between red, white. What are your thoughts, Chris?
I mean, is black not one of the codes, as it is here on the-
It is, but we've never allowed black uniforms.
If you want my personal opinion, I don't like the idea of black being a primary color. An accent color, sure, because I think if you start giving us solid black uniforms, we're Brooklyn now. We're not the Redskins.
True. Oh, black and gold.
I'm just saying, I just think Brooklyn, because they're black, red, and white, but black is your primary color. I mean, if we had the many school districts, I like the idea of having a, an alternate uniform, you know?
Kind of like Buffalo War last night.
There's been some blacks added into the uniforms, but it was, you know, it, it just didn't look good. Nobody liked it.
Coach, what's your thoughts? You been to your day, haven't you?
I worked in softball, black uniform, went to, I don't know, there's gonna be a riot. Daryl likes to be too, um, you know, I, we always try to stay away from the parade because of the people west of us. Uh, like here, we, uh, you know, football wanted a, a girl over here for my member. Football wanted a black uniform, your first year. And Dr. Arlo, it would be better to have that.
I mean, again, financially, I feel like if you can afford to do it, I think it's an alternate uniform where like, like colleges do now, one night a year, they wear black uniforms and call it a blackout or something like that. Maybe baseball and softball do the black pants occasionally as an alternate uniform where the top is looking bad.
I just think if we were allowed to offer it, even just as black pants, black football pants, white top, black. I mean, you got others, your, your tennis, your volleyball, they're wearing black bottoms. So why can't we allow it to all the sports? Black baseball pants, black. I mean, it doesn't have to be a solid uniform. Just allow it to be something different, if they wanted to. I'm not saying they have to. I'm just saying we open it up where they can.
I think they just thought their uniforms should last another ten or fifteen years. So we're discussing something, don't we?
I'm discussing it because of the new branding kit.
Yeah, yeah. I'd say maybe in there, and there might be, you know, something like Chris, an accent down the road that maybe people might want.
Cause I would agree too, that if you have black as an alternate option, that black is probably gonna last longer than a white. Most time you have to place white on, just, uh, you can't make a white. I mean, you can tell that on the kids on the, you know, those issue football helmets, because they haven't been refurbished yet. Like, I mean, they're starting again, not white.
White's just, it's a hard color.
It is.
And I just think that we should allow them to offer.
Do you have anything else?
Gary.
No.
Welcome to twenty twenty-five, Gary.
I'm stuck in that thing.
I'll put it there.
There were black, when I was here in nineties and two thousands, we had black uniforms.
Yeah, we had black, yeah.
Multiple times.
I would say if it's a, a particular sport or something, and they want, everybody's in agreement, bring it to us and we can look at it.
But do you really wanna bring, like, I guess that's my thing, is do we really want that brought to the board on approving a uniform? It's not really, like, I feel like the coach or the-
Well, I was, I was-
Athletic director should be able to do that.
Well, you have final approval over everything, correct?
So here's, here's what I've, what, I felt like that, you know, the, cause I try to figure out what the boundaries are, right? Um, nothing in here, like, we're not, the, the purpose of this wasn't to say, like, we're gonna change anything. I mean, we already have black as an accent color. What I feel like I got coming into the district was, black as an accent color. So in my world, I would continue that unless, you know, there's some direction that, hey, you know, we wanna expand that a little bit, um, because, again, going back to, to something Coach said, you know, there was, uh, some emotion tied to a black jersey or a black uniform. And, you know, that's, that's not what we want. We don't wanna create, okay, it's now about the uniform and not about the kids, right? And so I think having, and, and that's not what tonight is for. Tonight is just to, to have this conversation. But having that conversation and saying, okay, what are the, the boundaries that you as a board, that this community wants us to operate under, and then I'm gonna op, make sure we're operating under those boundaries?
Well, what you're really talking about, I mean, I know we've got off on uniforms, but there's a bunch of other things. And, and black is in the, the accent, and that's fine.
Right.
Like it is, and if there's something to decide to change, then where?
I've just, we've, okay.
I, I guess I'm confused with the cheerleaders. Are they not predominantly red?
No, they're white. Terrible.
When do they wear things?
Every Friday night, almost. Whites. And it's not, I'm just saying, I'm just not saying it's just for cheer, but like, who says, who says football doesn't want some black pants? Or baseball, black pants. I'm not saying they have to have all white uniforms, all black uniforms.
Right, right. Dark, dark uniform, make you look short.
Oh, my gosh, stop it, Gary.
White looks best on the male.
Okay, I'm not going to bat for anybody else.
I'm not against it at all. I'm not saying that. I will say this, to me, the cheerleaders are kind of the, the odd duck out, because they're gonna have to make sure basketball and football are on the same page with them, because if you got them wearing black uniforms in basketball and football doesn't get on board with that, now we look like two different.
Not necessarily. I mean, your cheer uniforms are literally red and white only, like, they, there's no black.
There's not any black in the football uniforms.
Oh, stop it. I'm gonna start bringing them to you to wash. So bad. And then you got some that don't wash them at all, and they're like chocolate brown. Okay.
Any other items for discussion?
I like you, Jennifer.
Listen, y'all need, there needs to be another female on this floor.
Okay, um, so I don't have anything else for the work session.